So where do we last leave off? I guess we're, we're trying to figure out how to present, I guess, a unified consensus and mostly, how do you articulate some parameters from modern architecture as a allowed use? Is that kind of where we were?
Yeah. Yeah. You know, I, I kind of looked and, and, you know, was speaking with somebody else at the BAR about this. You know, the, I always bring up the parallel of landmarks in the city. And landmarks has this booklet called The Guide to, The Townhouse Guide, I think, or The Townhouse Restoration Guide. But it's, it's almost as if the Form-based code is reading like this historic document of how to renovate your townhouses. It tells you all the styles. It tells you what's characteristic of the styles. It tells you exactly what you need to renovate your brownstone, whether it's Queen Anne's or, you know, Creek Revival or whatever, to make it, you know, historically accurate. But it looks, it sounds like that's what we want to do for brand-new houses here in Chappaquaun. I, you know, again, I don't agree with it. You know, the other big difference is, you know, again, New York City is my most, you know, I have the most experience there is, you know, there's a historic fabric there. You know, there's 90% historic buildings and everything else is infill. Whereas Chappaquaun is, you know, what, 10%, 5%, 10% of, you know, historic buildings of worth? And we're trying to infill 90% with something that looks historic. And I think it's just a backwards way of looking at things. And, and again, they bring this historic document of how to make a Queen Anne townhouse. And I just, I just don't agree with it at all.
I guess there's a desire, how do you control your product? You know, when you go through a rezoning in New York, and I've gone through ULA processes and they're very strict and they quite handcuffs them. Can't just do it.
Yeah.
And it's as a right, it's different. So how, so how does a town, how do we protect ourselves from an applicant coming in with something that we think is awful? And he's, and you don't like it. And he's like, oh, but I'm willing to do that. I don't care what you think.
Yeah.
And they may not even come to us. Don't forget, right now, the way it's written is nobody comes to the ARB again.
Right.
Sabrina's gonna take care of that, right?
I, I, yeah, guys, listen, you know, as much as it's written, the way it's written now, it's gonna be different. And there's no way that it won't come to you. You know, it may not come to you during its initial phases, but you guys have a very large role in review of building permits. And I don't think that that should change. You know, so, so at one point or another, depending on how detailed, you know, the, the code is, your, your committee will be, your board will be part of it. So.
Stanley, would you object if, if, if what they have now is there, but we add again another category and try to delineate that in some way? Is that, would that be something?
No, I, I think, I think Sarah started to touch on it. There's got to be a certain, if we say there's something contemporary or modern, you know, there's got to be some sort, you know, just throwing out words right now, just rhythm, articulation, quality of materials. I mean, maybe we ban things like IFIS, like no IFIS, no IFIS moldings or some, you know, really just cheap materials that just don't look good. You know, maybe that could be a start. You know, I, I found two examples of, again, infill, modern townhouses within historic Brooklyn or whatever. And they're perfectly modern, they're perfectly good, and they fit right in with the neighborhood. I think that's the goal we should be looking for, not for, you know, ye olde West houses.
Right, I think one of the, not maybe challenges, but the difference between Brooklyn infills, they are kind of contained within the proportions that already exist of the, while here we are introducing a different scale. So it's almost, it's, it's from the beginning, you have to establish certain rules to how it's going to fit in. Because it's not an infill that even if it's a, it's not even so much the, the change of style. Like, for example, in Brooklyn, when it's an infill, when everything, you, you basically continue with the fabric, that existing fabric of the street and the, and the town. While here, we are trying to introduce something new, different scale of the buildings.
Right.
Well, if I may, let me, let me, let me throw this out there and it might help you wrap your head around it a little bit more, given your backgrounds, right? So if you think about the Form-based code and you think about the streets as they exist today, there's a threshold within the Form-based code that if you are disturbing greater than 50% of the facade, that you have to comply with the code. Okay, so keep that in your mind. Also, keep in mind, most of the King Street Hill is left to where it is today. You know, it's, it's, the, the code stops about three quarters up the way of King Street, if not halfway up King Street, between lower and upper King Street. And that is where there's a height limitation of three stories. You know, and, and just think about the small lots that exist today on Lower King, on North Greeley. And North Greeley, you have somewhat larger lots as compared to South Greeley. You know, I don't think that the Bank of America building is going to change hands anytime soon. But think about the context of the street network that is there. When you look at Lower King, it's not as if that entire block is going to become available. But you may have, you know, a, a property owner amongst that Lower King on the eastern side, you may have somebody who wants to redo their building, you know, create better commercial space on the ground floor, or even the corner building, you know, which Sotheby's just vacated, they may want to do something more. The, the, the Tavolachis who own Susan Lawrence, they may want to redo that building, right? But they're not buying up the whole block. How do you fit into the fabric of what's there, right? And, and Stanley, you brought up something, you know, let's not allow cheap materials, right? That is very hard to control unless you are specifying it on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, well, I, I would, I, I actually, you know, I know that's walking into danger, but I would, I would say, I think there's certain materials and certain constructions we want to avoid that just scream cheap. And I said IFIS, and you might not be familiar with it, it's E-I-F-S. It's basically stucco on top of foam board and it looks, it looks cheap. And, and you can make it, you could make moldings out of it and it looks cheap. You can tell from, you know, 30 feet away, it's, it's cheap. So, you know, that's, that's where, if we can, you know, I can't even think of what else to, to kind of ban. But, you know, that would be one material possibly.
Right, and, and I'm not, I, listen, I'm not opposed to banning materials such as that. But, you know, I just, I want you to put it in the context of what we have today. Because, you know, contrary to the DG EIS, which does a build-out scenario, which imagines everything, that's not going to happen. There, there's several different reasons why that won't ever happen. Development on town land has yet to be decided and will go through a process unto itself. So we're really talking about the owners of the properties right now that may or may not want to take advantage of this code. And I'll give you an example. Randy Katches's building, which was sold to the gentleman who owns the shopping center in Millwood. When we talked to him about this code, because he was in the midst of stabilizing his building, he had no interest, right? He wanted to stabilize the existing one-story building that is there today, right? He has no intention of doing anything more to that structure other than stabilizing it. It will not be until he sells it to somebody and somebody wants to do something that that building will change its appearance. And the building, for all intensive purposes, is a beautiful building. You know, if you look at the street, if you look at the glass, you know, so thinking about the fabric of the streets that exist today, you know, what do you think, you know, in, in reading the draft code? You know, you know, kind of how does the, the architectural styling measure up or fit in with the fabric of what's there today? I don't know if that helps any.
Yeah, I mean, it's so, like to Stanley's point, I guess a question is, how specific does this have to be, right? Like, can we just say, for example, some of these things and add a few more styles? But does it have to be so constricting that it only is these five styles and nothing else, right? Like, that sort of reframing, I think, could be useful. Because modern, contemporary, who knows what's to come down the pike 10 years down the road? I don't know that we want to be excluding that. But if it's written up to be these five styles and that's it, then, then it does seem to limit the aesthetic flexibility. And, and the other comment I'd have is, within the styles that are there, I would suggest removing some of them as well, like specifically Italianate. I don't really see a lot of precedent for that in town. And if you're gonna have like four things listed there, the developers are gonna gravitate to what's there and start putting up all these Italianate buildings that really I don't think have any precedence. So my suggestion would be, pick four or five styles, including more contemporary styles, list those and preface it all with like, for example. And then the board has discretion to allow other things on a case-by-case basis versus trying to like box it in like, these and only these five things are the ways that it can be done within these districts.
It's called partly being done so that it can be more developer-friendly, so it becomes an as-a-right situation. And remember, guys, you know, we've always gotten ourselves a little frustrated where the code used to be just too similar or too dissimilar for us in our purview and the homes, not really commercial work that we look at, but the residential homes. And, you know, we got that somewhat expanded a couple of years ago. So if, if you leave it too broad, Brendan, then, then you don't really have any control.
But I also, let me throw this out there. Because, because I think that you guys are all raising really good points. And maybe adding a, a category, like maybe adding a couple more architecture types, right? The modern, a more contemporary, you know, with some, with some restriction or, or compartmentalism. I don't know if that's the right word. But then to leave a caveat or any other style as approved by your board, right? Because then it kind of leaves people who are very much into establishing an architectural feel for their building, right? The ability to work with an architectural review board to fit their style into the code. But that's their choice if they don't want to stick within the framework of the, the style, the, the, the style types that are detailed.
I mean, to me, that sounds, I would defer to Bob and others that know about like, whatever litigation risks we in the town face. But that seems like an elegant solution, right? You put a couple of examples in the code and, and if someone comes and wants to do something outside of that and we say no, well, then we're protected. But if we say yes, then, then that gives us the ability to allow some more creative things.
Yeah, I mean, because, because what I'm hearing is you don't want to stymie the creativity of a property owner or developer to be creative and enhance the fabric of the downtown. But on the other hand, you don't want it to run wild without some control. So, you know, understandable, the DG EIS studied, you know, certain architectural types that, you know, were already in the hamlet. And then they reserved contemporary for public buildings or, you know, or, you know, significant landmark-style buildings. What I'm hearing from you guys is that you kind of want to open that up to other people taking advantage of that contemporary modernist architecture. But then I don't see a problem with, from a litigation standpoint, you know, building in an option. And, you know, you know, I'd, I'd want to make sure that we don't run afoul of secret because the intention of doing the DG EIS is to help a property owner or developer get through the process in a more timely fashion, not get through kind of on the side and not go through appropriate channels, but to save them time and money under New York state law with the secret review. So as long as we're covered through the DG EIS, and that's where your comments become very important, right? So if your board was to issue a comment letter that talked about adding these other styles or a process whereby there is the flexibility for a property owner or developer to undertake an additional style as long as there's a different review process. You know, I think that then that would be wrestled with in the, in the FG EIS, the final generic environmental impact statement, and added into the code through the town board's findings. And then the legal backing to that process would exist.
Thought I'd read something about special permit somewhere within the first part of the, the first part of that, but I'm not.
Right, well, an applicant.
What that particularly involves. But that would be something that I think we're talking about right now.
A special permit right now under the code does not go to your board, right? It's not for architectural purposes. It's actually for different land uses. And the intention here, make development in this area as of right. And we're struggling with that as a community right now, that as of right, all of the boards want some sort of permitting control right now over this process. I think that out of all of the boards that want permitting control, the Architectural Review Board has the most standing in wanting to maintain your purview. Do you know what I'm saying? Because you're looking at the, the, the dressing of that building. You know, whereas other boards, you know, there's not a lot of steep slopes or trees to be removed in the hamlet. You know, so the Environmental Review Board may not have a lot to say about a building. You know, so, so there is, it makes sense in my mind to create a code where you guys do retain some authority. It's a matter of what the guidance behind that authority is and where we're gonna leave it open. Do you have enough information as a board to work with an applicant to get them through the process?
Well, I mean, you, you keep talking about the, the permitting process and, and the, the, the time consumption of that. And it would, I mean, that goes straight into us dealing with folks and, and the timely manner in which to get that done if we don't particularly like something.
What is the longest it's taken your board to review a project, guys?
Well, these are all houses that we're looking at now. It's like, it's usually two times and we're done at best.
Right, two times, it's one month.
Yeah, well, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the, what the initial, I mean, you, you had an anecdote about developers not wanting to come here just because of the process.
It's not you guys. It's not, it's not the Architectural Review Board, okay? It is, you know, a month, even two months, even three months is tolerable for a developer if they know what they're dealing with. It is the three years, the five years, the 10 years.
Yeah, that's a little out of control, but.
Yeah, and, and I have never, in the 10 years I've been working for the community, had your board become cause for a developer to be upset or walk away. A homeowner may not like it, right? And they may get upset. But you pretty much finish your review with them within at most two months, at most. Okay, so, so, so when I say, you know, the, the developers won't come here, it's because of the larger processes that applicants have to go through excluding your board.
Where, where do we come out on the parking garages in terms of the architecture and facade treatment? Since they're the, you're smiling again. Since they're the biggest by far, and I know you're gonna tell me they're in the back, but, you know, they're, they're pretty visible gigantic objects. Is there, is there anything right now that's written about that?
No, there's just limitations, limitations as to, as to where they can be located on the lot. There wasn't any envisioning about the Rite Aid lot turning into a parking garage.
Oh, like, good, you know, and the one across the street from it too.
Yeah, that, that's not allowed.
Not allowed?
No, it's not allowed. They can't turn into parking garage.
And what about in the train station where they would?
That's a different, that's a different, um, that's different. Let me just put it that way. It is in an F5 zone. It talks about how, you know, a little bit about how those garages should be facilitated. But it is legis, it is zoning code, it's not site planning. And there is a policy that the town board established that there's no net loss of existing parking. So, um, there was no garages, you know, street-facing garages contemplated in the hamlet by private property owners. The town's next big hurdle is dealing with parking. And they can't begin to think about what would happen on town property without addressing parking. And many of the property owners under the Form-based code are gonna be in the same position they're in today. Their lots are just not big enough to develop to the extent of the code because of parking requirements.
Okay, so again, so going back to the train station, I still ask, what, if this Form-based, if the Form-based code, the way it's written, were to be passed and implemented, and somebody wants to build something in the, in the train station, parking lot, they obviously have to build a parking deck just for the replacement parking, if not for their own parking. Are there any rules on what the skin of that looks like?
No, not yet, not in this code.
Okay. So to you guys, I think that's something that should be put in.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think, is it the situation like Constance Place? You could have two levels of parking with a Queen Anne-style building above it. Right?
Yeah, that's not in this code. It's whatever would exist today when it came to parking in the sense of how it would be laid out. The, the consultant team didn't go into documenting or legislating how a parking garage would be created. And primarily because the only real place to put a parking garage would be on town property. And that has many other processes to go through before that happens.
Yeah, because for the village itself, you're right, the properties are not so deep, even if they were combined a couple to be wider, to make it worthwhile for somebody to go to the effort to redevelop them. But when you have the big pieces of property, it's different.
Back, back to the, the styles. You know, I mean, and I'm just thinking out loud, I mean, you know, we, you're saying, you're assuming that the developers want to come in and do something creative. I think I, I look at it differently. Developers, and sorry, Robert, want to come in and do the, the cheapest, easiest thing that'll go up quickly and not spend a lot of money that'll satisfy the town.
Some of them.
Well, some of them, not you, Robert, not you. You know, could, could we write for, for new buildings? We have a document that's part Form-based code, part Gray Williams' great write-up in that one or two pages. Here's the history of our town, here's the history of styles. If you're gonna make a new building, read up on this. And when you're presenting the design for your new building, make a case for why it fits in. And it just reminds me of when, you know, Reader's Digest, they, they made all sorts of different styles. And I remember one style they wanted to do was a Dutch gable. And, you know, they did a little research, there's one or two Dutch gable buildings in this, in the town. And, and they kind of respected that. So whether people get it or not, it still relates to the town. And I think if there's some way that there's a document that any developer has to read in terms of their architectural design and they come forward with a building, they come to us and have to basically make a case. Like, again, when I go in front of LPC in, in the city, I have to make a case for why my addition fits in with whatever. You know, and they have to make a case, yes, we've read the history of your town, we've read Gray Williams' write-up and all the great styles. And, you know, we want to propose this building and it's X, Y, or Z style. But it's not, you know, the five styles we gave them. I mean, I don't know if that's realistic, but I think that opens up creativity and puts some onus on the developer to put some effort into the design. And then it, it gives us some purview to say, you didn't read up the history, you just came in with something. I don't know, maybe I'm just thinking too broadly, but.
How does everyone else feel about that?
Justify your design, I think it's a good idea. You know, you come up with, with a design for a building, you should have a good reason why does it look the way you're proposing.
But it has to do with the history of the town and the buildings that exist now.
Or it, that, or, or a new style or a modern one, why? And why is it appropriate, et cetera, justification for it.
Yeah.
I'm also, I'm, I'm kind of now a little concerned with that parking issue that Robert brought up. Because Sabrina, you're saying that we can't, the developer won't be able to, they have to provide parking, yes. And they, they're limited to what they can do within their lots, supposedly.
Yeah, there is a parking toolbox in the proposed code, which says, you know, if there's, if you arrange for parking in proximity to your site, that you can count it. There have been discussions in amending the parking toolbox in the code to allow for ride share, to de-restrict units, to not having car ownership and then creating a ride share. There's a particular property owner who, who you guys will love it, wants to be more contemporary in his building style. And he wants the chap car in the, in his basement. But on each of the lots, the parking is within the lot. It's not intended to be street-front on the lot. And, you know, and that's how it's resolved. And so the parking toolbox allows the property owner to be creative about how they're going to account for parking spaces. We've reduced the parking requirements per unit, per bedroom count based on proximity to the train station and the idea of the walkability. So the parking requirements are less than what we've had in the past, but they're still there. Haven't disappeared. So again, it's, it's, you know, a lot of people say, well, why didn't you deal with the parking before you looked at the code? It's the chicken and the egg, which comes first? You know, so, you know, the other side of the coin is that legislation will be promulgated. And as you know, legislation can be changed. You know, we just don't have enough resources right now to grapple with parking and grapple with new zoning legislation. So the town board decided to go with the zoning legislation amendments first. But the next big thing is solving the parking. And whether or not that happens contingent with discussion of town land or not, yet to be determined. You know, but I will tell you, there are parking agreements with a majority of the downtown businesses, those that own property and deeded it to the town, that give them parking for their commercial use. It does not give them parking for any residential use that they want to build above their commercial use. So there are restrictions on parking right now. And agreements that have outrageous language in them, you know, about parking and what could happen in the future. And I'm not an attorney, but it is a process to unwell all of that mess.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like the fact that it's, yeah, and I've read that, that you, you, you can't have the parking on the street, that you have to probably do it from the back alley or so, or create an alley or something like that, like you say. But I think to what Robert said, that to have some sort of guidelines in terms of how, also some sort of aesthetic that comes other than just the approach would maybe, maybe be desirable, you know, desirable. Just, just to have some sort of style guidelines as well for the parking, not only the, the way that, I mean, that's a very good point in the code, that, that cannot be. And it has to be probably from the back, you know, access, access. You know, access access. And all those other ideas. I mean, I'm going to just because. One of the, I think. Again, it's very, it's not very concrete, but again, as some sort of a general. General point would be, do you think that under this code, let's say with the development that could come? You know, as to, you know, all the way or halfway or depending on, you know. But do you think that that would make the? Do you think that would that would make the town? More would revive the town in in the so, for example, there is not enough sidewalks. There are no bike paths. I believe that.
We just redid the streetscape. The sidewalks can't be widened. I wanted them wider.
No, I just thinking about connecting a connecting place.
The only, the only, we have some real space issues, right? The only way to, you know, do bike paths and and, you know, better sidewalks. Is to, you know, be more is to work with the state to be more collaborative with us. You know, they they shot us in the foot when they extended the ADA requirements and the snow shelf, right? You know, so so they're really squeezing our roadway even further and not for. Alternative transportation and walkability. Okay, so the only, the only way to kind of get a redesign of bike paths and walkability. And more sidewalks is if you were to redo the town held property. And we're not there yet as a community to say, yes, we want to do this. And this is how it how we envision it being done. But part of the reason that the code stops at the point that it stops on King Street. Is that that is a state road and there's hefty requirements regarding sidewalks and roadway width. Up King Street, which make it virtually impossible to do better than what's there today.
Yeah, that's very, that's that's too bad because it's really.
But on the flip side, let me tell you this. With our zoning the way it is today, it doesn't give the state any reason to work with us. Right? It's they laugh at us. They say, what for? Right? Nobody's going to do anything. Creating a new code that calls for walkability, livability, rezoning. Because we need, we know we need to do more to revitalize our hamlet. Says to the state, guess what? We should really work with them. Right? It kind of puts us it's more serious in our endeavor. And you know, does the amount of development that I see happening? When this code gets adopted, maybe one or two properties will develop. And those are the larger properties downtown that that, you know, where you have the interest of the property owner to do something more. But we're talking maybe one or two properties. This big change will not occur until if and when the town wants to do something on town property.
Right? No, I was just thinking about, let's say exactly that happens. All these people suppose, you know, I'm not saying all those, but let's say all these seniors who would stay in Chappaqua. Where are they going to walk to? I mean, what are you going to do in that in that in this area? They're going to be, you know, it just, you want to link. And again, I'm going to come back to the urban design because I think that's that's kind of. Not not the best in our town.
No, you're a hundred percent.
All these people are just going to be, it's still not going to be a vibrant town. Because one of the, there's a lot of residents already here who want to participate in downtown, but there's not. You know, and I, so I'm just thinking, yeah, again, I was thinking sidewalks and more. Bike paths would would definitely do that too.
Well, you also have to look at other projects at the town. I'm going to give a plug. For other projects that the town's working on, you know, the whole chap line discussion, right? Trying to get us out of our valley and extend up to Chappica Crossing, right? That's a that's supposed to be a pedestrian bike path, trailway to try and make that connection. We worked very hard under the Chappica Crossing project to have them provide us a shuttle. And that shuttle, you know, under non-COVID conditions is to run between Chappica Crossing and the train station. There have been discussions about extending it into Millwood to try and create alternative connections for people. You know, if you live up on Chappica Crossing and you go into Manhattan every day for work. Instead of buying a parking pass, you hop on the shuttle and it brings you downtown. You know, those are the type of things that we're working on and you know, everything is a baby step. You know, and so instead of like kind of doing something all at once, deciding town land and then rezoning. Like New Rochelle, like they took a big chunk. They went out, worked with a master developer. They had they had 12 acres of town owned land, 272 acres within their downtown area of blighted properties. They did the whole rezoning and master development all at once. We tried that. We tried that early on in the comprehensive planning process and it got beaten up in the in the elections, you know. So we we decided to take a step back and look at creating policy, right? Policy goals through the comprehensive plan. And now we're looking at the legislation, so baby steps. But Claudia, you are, you're thinking is right along the lines of what we're trying to do. It's unfortunately, we just need to step it out a little bit more.
No, I read the comprehensive plan and and so how all those great ideas, but I'm just thinking that. Yeah, to create development downtown where it's going to actually, you know. As long as we link it to the rest of the town, then there's it's a little bit. It's just going to be some revenue maybe for town, but I don't know how 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 great it's going to be for. For these people.
The reality is that there will never be enough people to support the existing retail we have now. Okay, that's nice unless we make great changes.
Yeah, exactly. But that's, I think, also the people who already live here could support the. If there was, if they wanted to spend time down downtown. So how, you know, it's it's not only the development itself, but already the residents. People here go to Catana, they go to other, go to Pleasantville instead of staying in Chappaqua and going downtown.
Right, well, and again, this is all trying to do better about keeping people in the community. Okay, because instead of instead of, you know, Rite Aid, Rite Aid leaving and a really cool restaurant moving in. Because they have a whole parking lot, what were we going to get? A dollar store. Right? Nothing wrong with a dollar store. People will go to a dollar store. But when we talk about walkability. You know, you want the uses that people are going out for today. And COVID is is actually working in our favor. More people are spending time in their own backyards. So, you know, so it's timely, but again, change takes time. And so this code is a step in that direction, trying to move it forward.
Why was the train station put in all those immense public lands into the plan? Because I would think it would be a lot less, you know, political and simple implement if it was. Really talking about changing what we have today, making it better and bigger. As opposed to something that is a completely different situation.
Leadership?
Okay.
I'm going to say leadership, you know, the you couldn't. I if we didn't include the the town land, it would be. A lot less controversial today, but it would not have met the goals. Of what the town was trying to accomplish, because there's a vision for that in the rezoning. How that vision plays out is yet to be decided, but that is intended to be the center. Of the hamlet.
But it seems to me that if you want to be impactful, I do think I agree with you, right? It would be great to have a restaurant and the parking lot across the street. If you built something over the parking lot, I mean, those there were real opportunities there. The decent sized blocks of real estate that you could do something. But to do something really impactful, if you want to do it, you need to do something that's a major change like. You know, take away the surface parking lots. You know, which you're going to, I personally don't support. I think that that's a fabulous town amenity that we shouldn't. You know, ignore actually. And a big attraction to the town. I do feel that way, so.
Right, but you so so in your own discussion over there, Bob, you kind of saw both sides of that going.
Well, well, okay, but so then, so then if it's a choice in a sense, if you want to look at it that way. Between if we don't do something big and bold in the train stations, the town's going to stay the way it is. Or it could grow by small increments, but it'll stay essentially the way it is. Do you want with with is that behind curtain number one and behind curtain number two is something big and dramatic at the train station? Me personally, I take it the way it is.
Well, but I want you to know there are alternatives in in the DGIS. And there has been a lot of discussion about removing town lands from the rezoning. Okay, so that's on the table, right? And it really puts the puts the burden of making the change into the private property. Owners hands, which is fine. I mean, these are the things that the town board is grappling with right now, based on public comment. And you know, the the impacts of removing the town land were studied in the DGIS. So no decisions have been made. You know, again, we're talking about town land, not necessarily talking about the purview of your board, but.
But it's relevant to urban design and urban planning. And what you would, what you would have in the train station, you'd have a whole bunch of big precast garages. Probably paid for with redevelopment bonds that everybody's parking permit that's expensive is going to double or triple. And somebody could do a nice job with infill housing, but you know, you lose the big surface parking lots. You know, I don't have a problem with more housing downtown. I would totally support that and. Yeah, I guess my concern is losing that big surface parking lot as as a amenity to the town. I just think that's a dangerous place. People should just be aware that. You know, that if the town wanted to make an impact as opposed to just doing Rite Aid. You know, you can make a dramatic impact really immediately, you know, by RFPing the train station land.
Bob, yes, yes, you can, but that's not the process we're undertaking right now. And as a board, while you may have input into that process. Right now, you know, we're looking at a code, a form based code legislation with architectural standards. That affect the purview of your board. And so, you know.
I'll stay in line, but I.
I want to try and refocus your comments because you guys have really good comments, but I.
But but.
About that.
But it's fair game for the precast for whatever the garages are, that the architecture of the garages, that that is totally fair for the board.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Anything else?
I think getting back to Stanley's point regarding, and you talked to more about almost a narrative. Is that right, Stanley? More of a narrative?
You know, I mean, rather than, you know, give them. Give them a set of rules, no matter how expanded of what they can build in. Is let them be creative, but within a broader framework or description. Or narrative of what the town is about, what styles have been in the town and and. Let somebody who's building a new building make a case for it. I mean, if somebody comes in with a Mediterranean building, you could say no. I mean, it's got to be legal.
And I, yeah, yeah, I I mean, I wouldn't, I think that would be great. You know.
I just don't know how you implement that.
Yeah, I don't know.
You're asking for creativity.
Exactly. I don't know where that, I mean, so I was, I just pulled up some of the the, I think, what is it? Tort Gallas, Sabrina?
Tort Gallas, yes.
Yeah, they, I mean, they they did some of the, you know, Lower Hudson River Valley architectural history. You know, they they did some work in the characters and styles and, you know, from a broader perspective. Back a couple of years ago, it seems like it's gotten whittled down to, you know, what Brendan was talking about somehow Italianate got. Got selected for.
There was a lot of.
One of the, one of the, one of the check marks that if you want to come in to build something, you can check mark. But I think some of that, I think some of that that work was done. It's just a matter of how do we mold that? And and put it into, put it into this framework.
There are some, like, I don't know how how specific, because we either too general or maybe too specific. I have now, because for example, I, there is a little mistake on one of the diagrams and I don't know if it's, oh, at least it's misleading. Once you present a visual diagram, it'd be nice if it's visually correct. So it's on page 20, I think. Well, is it 20? Yes, there is a maximum height of a story and it basically has two different dimensions. And 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 that could be corrected, for example. Of this, it's it's not really to the content, but just like I, since I saw that. But there are, there are also some things that I like about. The the guidelines are the. The placement and and of the landmarks and the vista that you have to respect. That's, I think, a very good point. That's something. Oh, you are, you are off, you have.
Sorry. So are we? Is it fair to say, you know, I know Daisy's working on minutes from your last meeting and she's taking minutes of this meeting. Is it something that as a board, you would kind of want to all kind of look at a summary of your discussion? You know, so you guys can kind of fill it out a little bit in preparation of meeting with the town board. They gave me some dates for you to meet with them. You know, to to kind of discuss this, this topic as well as other topics that they may that may be on your mind as a board. And they were looking at March 2nd. Is that something that you guys would want to do? And I would assume it's a Zoom meeting with the board.
Day of the week is on Tuesday. I'm fine with it.
Can everybody do March 2nd?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah. Sorry, because then I then I'll I'll tell Jill Shapiro that you guys can do it on the second. And then that will give enough time for Daisy to circulate the minutes. And, you know, and I'll help her put together a bullet list of your comments thus far. So you can all have that and kind of think about it a little bit, flesh it out if you want. And then you'll have it for your discussion with the town board. And it will help me in my in my tracking and working with our consultant team. To, you know, look for ways to interject your comments and address them in a rewrite of the code as we get there. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And 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 I I do want to open up if any of you have additional comments or things you want to send me, you know, as individuals. I'm happy to take them. You know, I I respect all of your opinions and kind of the work that you do. And appreciate the time you spend looking at this and discussing this. So thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Sounds good. One other thing to just put in the bullets for the meeting, and I don't know how others think about it, but it's a really minor point. But I think we should give it some thought. Amongst the town historians, very good points, and I generally like his letter. I think it's a bit too expansive in terms of how many individual buildings it contemplates landmarking. Could could both constrain future development on those sites. And also frankly, some of those buildings are actually quite ugly, in my opinion, and should not be landmarked. So and we can get into specifics if and when that ever becomes appropriate. But as a general point, I think that certainly my personal opinion and hopefully an opinion that the board can come to as a group. Is that every single building listed in his letter need not be landmarked and preserved for posterity because there are some clunkers in there.
Agreed.
I agree. There's a couple of nice ones.
Termites will get some of those buildings.
I think that is an important point to impress on the town board.
Or wood rod.
Okay. And I think also, you know, if there's any other areas of Gray's comments that you either, you know, emphatically support or maybe. And I think also, you know, if if there's any other areas of Gray's comments that you either, you know, emphatically support or maybe not so much. I think the town board would be interested in that as well. I can share with you, I am sure that there are town board members who also feel your point on not wanting to landmark all of the buildings listed in Gray's letter. But there may be other things that Grace speaks of that you may or may not be in favor of, and I think that they'll want to hear that as well.
Okay.
There's a got one, two, three, four, six of them, I guess. Firehouse Community Center. 65 King Street, which is 65 King Street. Northwest corner of King North Greeley, you know, is that, that's next to.
That's the Sotheby's building, isn't it? Or the old?
Yeah, yeah.
The only, the only clunker I can think of was at the opportunity shop, was it Brendan?
That's the one I was principally thinking of.
I mean, I think that's the only one I can think of, but.
Yeah, I mean, I I that's the one I feel strongest about. I mean, Sotheby's, I could take or leave, it's it's fine, it's not bad, but you could do better things on that corner, I think, and.
And which is one King Street, which is.
The what? That is the four story at the end of King Street.
Yeah, that's the tile.
I mean, the train. Yeah, the problem is those buildings have been not well maintained, let's just say.
Well, just food for thought, you know, you know, I think that the town board has received Gray's letter, they've all read Gray's letter. I think if you guys have any strong opinions either way about some of his points, I think it'd be helpful as as a board for you to discuss that and, you know, to offer, whether it's your personal opinion or a board opinion. You know, when you have an opportunity to meet with them, you know, let them hear it.
Because if you're going to do something impactful and you're going to take all of the largest building pads off the table. You back to the train station, nothing else, you know.
Right, I mean, it kind of defeats the purpose, but hey.
Now, there's some, those are the largest building pads, you know. So.
Okay. All right, anything else? Nope.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Thank you.
I know, thank you, guys. I appreciate the time.
All right.
All right.
Good night. Bye.